Okay, good morning, everyone. Today is July 21st, 2020. I'm sure it'll be nine over two AM. So we're back in budget session. The first department this morning is Eddie Soubaldo with juvenile probation. Eddie, if you want to step forward, you can either have a seat there or you can just stand.
Okay, I'm just gonna stand if I can, please.
Page thirty-nine, Eddie? Eddie, did you have any changes?
The only change I had was just the five percent increase in salary that was given last year. And I'm gonna ask that it... I didn't ask for it in my budget last year and I'm just to put it in this year.
Okay. So the total budget went from five twenty-one, five sixty-six to five thirty-eight, two eighty-one?
Two eighty-one, yes.
Any questions, Eddie? All right. Well, thank you. You're doing a great job over there.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right. Let's see, page eighteen. County Attorney Jim.
Good morning.
Good morning, Angie.
If you weren't ready for me to go...
Just a second, let me find your page.
Don't worry yourselves what the actual number is.
Okay. Did you change anything, Jim?
No, sir, I'm just asking for the same budget. Of course, this year, I'm gonna be... I've spent very little on conferences, seminars, and dues, obviously. Luckily, I am, because all the CLE events have basically been canceled. Luckily, I'm ahead on that and probably I've gotta look at next year. I may have enough for another year without getting, you know, big chunks at a time. But I would like to stay the same. We're going to... I'm anticipating before the end of this year, buying some office furniture for Monica to try to make her office a little bit more conducive. I think there's, as far as the desk setup and stuff, there's things she'd like to be able to work a little better, so...
Okay.
And we've had, I don't know how long we've had what's in there, so... But that'll come out of this budget. I've got them to have more than enough to cover that, so... But I would ask you all to keep it at the same level.
Okay.
I think that's... I don't think it's outrageous, and I think it's enough where I have some room to maneuver and operate for many years, so I appreciate that if you will.
Okay. Any questions, Jim? Jim, or do you think on the conference seminar?
Oh, yes, I mean, I'll, you know, I'll make that work. You know, most conferences I can go to usually will get you, if not more than your yearly, what you need each year, real close, so...
Okay, all right.
That's not a problem, so...
Okay. Any questions, Jim? All right, then, we'll... We got you down to the same as last year. All right, thank you.
Thank y'all.
I've got a question. You talked about getting some office equipment?
Yes.
The morning stuff?
Yes.
And then, are you gonna get that from office supplies or what?
Well, I think I'll look at probably office supplies. I think I'm gonna have, because of course, my business has slowed down, you know, during this somewhat. So I think either that or out of the conferences, seminars, and dues overage. I'm not sure I've really looked to see, you know, what I'm looking at, but I think I have more than enough from one or both of those places to take care of things, so...
Melinda, just to talk about yesterday on that, on the office equipment. What would that be for his office, as far as office equipment? Is that just kind of a misspelled, or is that... What would that be?
Well, if you spent over... If you spent over five thousand dollars, that's where we put it. But, you know, some people like to, like if they purchase a printer or a computer, that's... They like to track in their office equipment.
That's where I was going, you know. I was just wondering if we need to move some money in there for him to better track that his equipment rather than get it out of office supplies. That's my... That would work.
That's up to him, but, I mean, that's...
And, you know, just, I mean, we're talking about budget. We talked about different line item yesterday, and I was just thinking, maybe whether to move enough money in there or whatever, just kind of keep what it says off the flip. I was... When do I want the budget?
Now, I mean, like what he's talking about purchasing, it really is office supplies.
Okay. All right, Jim. It's not gonna be desks or chairs, because those are office supplies.
I think if you look down there, I don't know what year it was, there's like fourteen forty-eight down in the, whatever it is, equipment or whatever.
It is nineteen.
I think that was maybe my computer.
Yeah.
Now, I bought one last fall. Last fall or this spring? I can't remember, but for... Well, it was for Yvonne, of course, at the time, and I don't guess we moved that purchase down into that line item.
Well, right now, it's kind of good, that's why I mentioned, you know, do it the way it is, because for clarity, you're the same money.
Usually things like that, I just try to get, if I have extra in one category. Now, I don't mind if we need to align out a transfer this year to recognize that, so you can kind of see what's happened. I don't mind doing that at all, but it's rare that I probably look and say, hey, I'm gonna have to have, you know, five thousand dollars worth of whatever.
But I mean, that's compared to my office supplies.
I'll just check in to see that other computer you bought. I mean, if it's not...
And I can't remember if that was this... Almost like that was this...
It was last year.
This was last year, last fall, maybe?
Twenty eighteen.
So...
It's hard to tell in history, because then, you know, so...
Or is it the first of... It was the first of the year.
Do we use technology or whatever to computer fund money for that instead of my budget?
I'm not seeing where it came out of here.
It may have been out of that, yeah. I think it was, because I think you said you had it. So that's probably why that's not there, so... Probably you got any money for desks or chairs. So, yeah, that's why that wasn't moved down, so... I think in the past, when I've done something like that, we had recognized it as, you know, equipment or whatever that category is, so...
I mean, I'll just say this. When the outside auditors come and they look at our capital outlay and there's something in there that's not five thousand dollars, they don't tell me I have to move it, because we explain to them that that's just how some of the elected officials want to track their stuff. So it's not that it's wrong, but... And we try to watch it. I mean, but if we know you don't have anything budgeted, the only place you do have it is in office supplies, unless we move it down. So it's... But if it is five thousand dollars, I guess that we put it in office equipment.
Well, I would be really surprised if it's five thousand dollars, so...
All right. Any else?
Sir, please.
Thank you, Jim. Andy, the board's due here at nine thirty.
This looks basically the same as last year.
You wanna... Melinda and I talked yesterday about revenue, and I fully intended to go by twenty-nine ten figures, because of the way this year's balance has been, and I got off in the ditch on some of them, so... We talked, you can take that time to go back to downtown Melinda, and you don't want to wait here.
Now, we could, I mean, we can start with the watch.
Okay.
Or just flag it and get...
All right, let's go back to page one. And the first one that we changed was that turf and motor vehicle sales tax. And my suggestion on these is, on some things, why don't we wait until the department person comes? Let's wait till Roland comes and let's ask Roland about that and see what he thinks. And the same with the jail inmates, let's wait till the sheriff is here this afternoon and talk to him about that. So that, the turf and housing of prisoners. The county judges fees, we move that down to five. Let's move it back to... Because the deal is, we've still filed cases for this year. We just haven't processed them. And so, we're gonna have those fees once everything goes through the court, and so it's really not fair to say we hadn't made much, because we probably made as much as we normally do, we just had to process it, so... And I think that's on lots of these fees and stuff, that they just haven't been processed, and so...
But you feel like they will be?
I believe they will be, yes, sir. And the same for the sheriff's fees.
Move it back to eighty, please?
Let's move it back to eighty, please. Because he's gonna have the same thing, he's gonna have lots of them. You know, because when they put lots of the stoppage to lots of the suits that could occur during COVID, you know, that shut that all down, you know, because there was nothing being served or anything like that. They're still gonna... Those cases are still there, they're just, they haven't been processed, so as soon as they're able to process them, they're gonna process them, and those fees will be county clerk fees up to a thousand. On that second one, we moved it down to one sixty, let's change it up to one sixty-five. Carla, do you feel the same way on your page?
Yes, I do. One seventy-five.
One seventy-five, okay. Sorry about that, just like I said, I messed that up yesterday.
Well, not really, because that's kind of how it looked yesterday.
Like I said, I started out with that, and even Carla reminded me midway through it, and I still got off in the ditch on that, so... Those title applications, we just reduced to twenty-five hundred, let's take it back to thirty-five.
With the constable fees, you want to put it back to seventeen?
Yes, sir.
So on that driving shift, Doug, you left there at fifteen hundred?
Yeah, let's go ahead and... Well, the only reason I did that when I did Memorial was because of the expense so far this year. It was at twelve twenty, and so I just rounded it up to twenty-five hundred. Okay. And then... The motor vehicle deal was down... Okay. On the motor vehicle commission, let's go ahead and move that back to nine. Justice of the peace fees, let's move those back to what they were calculated at, one seventy, we do fifty. The special court administration, let's move that back to twenty-five thousand instead of twenty. The DA's criminal court costs, let's move that back to nine. We leave that judicial support fee at fifteen hundred, and the restitution fee at one fifty. Okay, page two, page...
It's on which one, Mr.?
That, on page two, where it says county clerk fees. Thirty-four eighteen is the last four.
And your fine and forfeiture.
Thirty-four eighteen?
Yes, sir.
Page two.
Page two. Page two.
I know, page two.
County clerk fines, it's the fourth thing down.
Thirty-four eighteen?
It says fines and forfeiture. Let's put it back to eighty. And then, that takes us down to the investment, the interest on the investment. Now, that one, you know, we did talk about, and we moved it down to one seventy-five. Melinda had it calculated at two fifty. So what's y'all thinking on that one?
Well, it was funny, they know that, it's already, so...
Okay. Do you think it'll be at two fifty?
I don't know, I'd say...
Let's say... Let's wait and talk to Danny on the Ollie Blockiner rental fee, because we moved that down from twenty to twelve five. Let's talk to him and see what he thinks about that. Let's go ahead and park it fee back up to ten, because I know we lost lots of those because I wanted to travel or anything, so...
Sorry, Judge, interest on the clerk's, or did you...
No, we left it at one fifty.
Or two fifty?
Or two fifty.
And the DA left that at one fifty?
Yeah. The payphone commissions, let's move it back to forty, because we've been, our inmate numbers have been way down, so when those go back up, that commission check will go back there.
Which is that we got?
Here it is. The payphone commission, thirty-seven oh five.
Move it back to...
Move it back to forty.
Forty, okay.
We put it down at thirty-two. And I think that's it. I won't say that's the only mistake I made yesterday. We're gonna talk to Danny. He can do exactly that. And on the cruiser inmate deal, we'll talk to Cochran. All right. Now, anything you want to do before Andy comes to lunch, or whatever?
I think we're done with everything, so...
Done. Nine thirty, we got Andy. Nine forty-five, we got Sheriff Sharon. He's in, he's walking. Okay.
And I think we're overstaying the solvency, share that with you.
Okay.
Now, I want to say this, you know, we're trying to project a year and a half in advance, so... But I don't want to not tell you where we're at.
All right.
I think we'll end this at eleven, all right?
All right.
You gotta remember, I've read the solvency to Melinda, where I'm sure you're not gonna recognize it.
Well, it's showing a lot, you know, it's showing eighty-six percent. This is showing eighty-six, eighty-six oh eight five.
Exactly, that has to do with the interest of the ICS accounts. What are you showing over there?
Showing eighty-six thousand, eighty-five forty-five.
What am I showing? Now, in that, I'll tell you this, that in that, you know, the investments I do do when I sweep, that wasn't received until Monday this week, so it's not reflecting, because I think it actually is.
Well, the one you gave me yesterday, that says eighty-six, oh, wait, that forty-five.
Yeah, that's what Melinda was telling you. But you see, those numbers are actually what we closed with. My number's on my report that I just handed you on this a little bit.
Three twenty-five.
Yeah, it's still interesting.
Okay, go back to, on page two, on the investment.
Can you, Senator, explain what...
We got it to fifty.
Something I saw that, Jack.
All right. We had one in page... Yeah, pretty much all.
Tell them about that.
Interest on the investment, thirty-six oh three.
Thirty-six oh three. Andy, you want to say that?
Two twenty-five. Oh, we're gonna dump him then.
Are y'all this morning?
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah. Yeah, if I get through this morning, I have coffee, I'm gonna...
We're good.
You don't have to have those pills to say...
I think it's one of those games.
Ready?
Are you in the coffee? All right, yeah, if y'all ready.
Okay.
Y'all can either stand or sit.
We'll sit.
No, hold on, I'm gonna stand.
Basically, you know, last, of course, we didn't have anything normal this year, because this is the year that aren't normal, so usually we go down line item by line item, but this year, I just asked, did y'all change anything?
The only thing that we did change was in our office equipment. We were asking for an additional thousand dollars there.
Okay.
Right now, we've been buying computers through Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension for the cost share, and we try to replace those every other year for each employee, and to be able to do that, it's three employees at a time, so it typically costs somewhere around three thousand dollars. So we were asking to go from the two thousand to three thousand on that particular line item.
Okay. Now, mine on your office supply?
That was office equipment at the bottom, under capital outlay.
Okay, all right. Yeah, any questions about any of that? That's all, that sounds fair to us.
Otherwise, we left everything else the same for right now.
Okay. Any questions, Andy?
We cut them dry now.
All right.
We appreciate what you've done.
Thank you.
I know it's been a hard year, so hopefully...
We're gonna get back to normal one day.
Get back to normal. You notice I didn't say the new normal?
No.
But anyway, well, thank y'all for being here.
Okay, thank y'all very much, appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Yeah, most people catch their budget, they're staying.
Well, the thing that helps them is, when they don't have to actually...
Yeah.
Where do you take the...
Office supplies? Office equipment, seven bucks? Do you want to put down? Good, put it down.
I mean, and we'll just come back to the capital outlay. What really catches attention is when you put something that is over what should be like in office equipment, but they put it in office supplies. And that's when I have to look at it to see if it's necessary to move it down into that line item. But we've never, I mean, it is up to y'all where you want to track it. I'm just gonna keep on it if it's over five thousand, because I have...
I want you to call Rob, you too, if you come in?
Well, we got Sharon first, but yeah, I think we're gonna be ahead. She'll show up if she shows up. In fact, I'll call her.
Call her, yeah, call her, and then I'll call her.
She got a phone, too. Is Sharon there? Hey, this is David Mull. Tell her that we're ahead of schedule on budgets, so if she comes up, we'll be waiting. Thank you. Bye-bye. Lot of work. I think I could do it for you.
No.
They just make a little extension, a little extension up here. That's a hand, usually three, four months.
Oh, yeah. Think you would cut me?
Just a little bit.
What's the dollar?
You would cut me?
I'd have volunteered to take me there.
Ken's trying to cut me over here.
Time to help her out.
You tell her you might.
You tell yourself.
She can't, she can't deny it, you know that?
Yeah, I know, well.
I ain't gonna use that.
Yeah, that's, we went to a conference and we got stuck with Obama in Boston. And Suzie and Monica and I had gone shopping and on the way back, they had vacated the place and they searched my car. It had a knife in my glove compartment. And then Marla was like, what were you doing with that knife? And I said, you gave it to me. And he was like, oh, something what?
They almost didn't let it get bad.
Yeah, he just told me, just don't take it in. But some of my friends, friends are packing and they took their little clip out to get, they had to go claim it after the conference. At least I don't pack.
Maybe you should, oh, okay.
Maybe I should now with the ICS.
And that's lost a lot of knives because they had to get there in the L.
At Airport?
Well, different places.
My son is Airport. My son loved it.
Not just Airport, but you know, places you get into and they go, well, if you got any weapons. I don't consider my knife a weapon, but.
With the Ted Baker game, John Sagan. Yeah. And we overdoed it, so, and he realized, yeah, and I was like, and they would let me in some. I told him, I said, pay attention, the door won't end, I said, come out the same one, I said, go there, hide somewhere. And he, you know, anyway, come out the same door.
People watch for that.
Oh, yeah.
The last one I lost was a really good one, and it was at Ridley Field in Chicago. I went to baseball game and I did that same thing, and I guarantee people said to me, if they know people do that and they've watched to see where they put stuff.
Well, I felt bad, this was one of his grandpa's games.
That's yours. Hey, Sharon.
There you go.
How are you? Hey, Judge. You can either sit there, or you can sit in the hot seat, or you can stand, or whatever you wanna do.
But Harold's gonna spray you down before you need to.
Hey, I'm this morning.
Good, y'all.
I'm okay.
We're, uh, we're on page fifteen. Sharon's got several pages to go, but this is our main office budget, so. We're doing a little different this year, Sharon, ready to be going fine by line. We're just asking you if you make any changes.
No.
Okay. And so, uh, on page fifteen. Okay, so it's the exact same as last year, so.
Yes, sir.
Then let's go to page ninety-four and ninety-five. Well, first of all, let me ask you, heard any questions, put it on, on page fifteen. No? Okay. And let's go to ninety-four on the side. All right, this one is the Justice CRT Tech Fund for JP One. Did any changes occur there?
No.
Okay. The next page, that is the revenue, uh, part of it, on the next page is the expenditure part. Uh, no changes there?
No, sir.
And then let's go to page ninety. Uh, page ninety-eight is JP One Case Manager Revenue. Any changes there?
No, sir.
Okay. Page ninety-nine is the expenditure part there. And there's nothing there, so we're good to go there. And then on one hundred is the, uh, same thing, there is nothing there, so there's no. Anybody have any questions, Sharon? Well, we're hopefully planning for a lot better year next year, uh, for just everybody, so. Thank you for what you've done. I know you've had a busy year in some aspects, it's been like.
Right. Thank you, sir.
A lot of people don't realize what all the JCPenney have to do, lots of those duties, very unpleasant duty, so. We thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All righty. All right, if there's no questions, do you have anything, Sharon?
No, sir.
Okay. All righty, thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
Those are arms, turn around.
Oh, Sharon, excuse me, I thought, will you take that gown and throw away?
Oh, okay.
Try it on first. I've got a camera going, try it on first.
My own's fit, I feel my shit. Anymore, I have everything, two covers, yes, yes, so, yeah.
She's one of the cute people that avoid those now.
That's right. Oh, me.
I guess that's what's supposed to happen.
Is that windowsill?
No, it's germicide, anti-bankery.
It's the fungus, a monkey.
I'm just following the judges off.
If we had eyes, I would use it.
Yeah. Nobody does.
No such thing anymore out here. Oh, Harold, would you get that in?
Yeah, there is, you just can get it.
Yeah, that's something. That's the first thing when I go in there, it's like my trip.
Yeah, where do the Mexicans get five in also?
That's not a disinfectant.
Huh?
It's not a disinfectant.
What is it?
La Celle, no, what is it?
No, he said, Pablos.
Pablos, so.
No, that's just plain.
Yeah.
That's not shit, though.
It's a, it's, it's just a smell.
It could be disinfectant.
Somehow I didn't see this.
I don't think it's an, it's a disinfectant.
I don't like that.
Other, you said other.
Did you get out of wallet?
No, I forgot to tell you.
I thought you were talking to.
No, probably someone else.
The one?
We're ready to go, we're ready, if your budget gets.
That's us going.
Nine forty. Yeah.
The rock, did you try it in there slightly?
All right, see you later.
Really?
Long as I'm going, I'm gonna. As far as the general budget's exactly the same, it's easy to rule.
Really, just. Hell, it's kinda high, I bet.
Well, telephone with them, well, I didn't handle them, couldn't handle it, took them down.
His telephone was days on.
Well, uh, pretty late today.
How many phones in there? It's a hundred and eighty-two. Hundred and eighty-two?
Oh, that's twenty, about twenty, twenty-five.
I think it went up just a little bit.
Sixty, they're twelve.
Yeah. Yeah. Maybe. Yeah, sixty.
Well, actually, one day.
Yeah, I've heard that one, uh.
We just talked about it.
Yeah.
Hey, you might call him back.
Watch it better, you know, people.
It's one time, come up to elevate his progress from intro. And dial over here.
That's what the whole. Hey, that's what I'm trying to teach you, your lesson, it basically looks the same, unless you really have anything just to tell us, then you don't even show up.
Time to be at our mercy if they don't show up.
He kept the thing to self and. Yeah, well, yeah, everything right now is still the same, we haven't done any of that part of it, so we can do that if we ever get to know it. So, but yeah, your basic budget looks the same, so you don't, you don't have to come over here. All right, see you. We're done.
Now, he wanted to come talk to us after we get numbers in or whatever?
Yeah, I'm talking about.
Okay. He might just make note of that on the. He doesn't wanna come and talk about his budget because he left it the same, but once we get the numbers in and start talking about. Rates and things like that, he wants to come talk about. All right, then that leaves us till ten-thirty on Zoom with Latrice.
I'm texting her right now, see if she's ready.
Okay.
Who's after Latrice?
Uh, Roland.
Do you want me to call Roland too, I'm gonna call her.
Yeah.
And then that'll give me time to get her set up.
We'll probably have to wait on Karen because she usually, about that time goes to the jail and everything.
So Roland, should we do it maybe about ten?
I should go ahead and tell.
Yeah, go ahead and do it now.
Yeah, I can take them all over there now.
Okay, well, Wallace coming to tell us about her condition, probably, okay?
Ah.
That's fine, we don't like long.
Yeah.
Probably about that issue, right?
Yeah. We'll be volunteering. Uh, how many more he's got on the bill?
Once things slow down, I guess we need to get ahold of Chad or Larry or somebody and get them to go over there and do a, Chad did that for us at the sheriff's office. He went.
Check the malls.
And most of them have a date of installation.
Yeah.
Scratch down them or something, and he, he records those for us.
Well, if you can wait, you know, Larry can tell me, I'm dealing my own, that if, right now, they're just so busy. He says, if you can wait, that could save you pretty good money, you know.
Well, the other thing is, like I say, if we could get an actual count of what's up there, and how long it's been up there.
Last time they were in my office, they said somebody needed to change the filters. I said, do you do that? He said, no, y'all have somebody who does.
Yeah, somebody changing filters on all these here?
We need to make this man, man, does the maintenance and filter changes, because we don't have anybody that does that. I mean, the way it's hard to get changed is to call Larry.
Yeah, Louis used to change them, you know, as part of the contract.
Contract.
But I'll, I'll have to look.
Pretty important, I changed some of my own a while back. All just broke down. I couldn't believe how bad they get.
I don't think it's still functioning like someone.
Must change it by the.
They're, I mean, they're.
That, they were three months.
It makes a big difference, even if, like my house, you know, our, our little system will tell you to change filter or whatever. And it makes a big difference. You can tell by the time that it kicks on and kicks off.
Yeah, if they get pissed off, they'll just freeze up.
Why it has to work so much more?
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be that dirty for it, make a difference when you replace it.
No, I guess this one's on some kind of, some type of time sensor.
I started out in a bank whenever I finished.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
The way I, I need to go by the look, okay, I need to.
Yeah, Ethan, I've called.
Yeah.
Will you talk to NTS again? I think they need to kind of check Roland's phone.
Okay.
Because there was, I was gonna call you last time when I was home sick.
You know, there's a box back behind there, and what Andrew told me, that's their phone box, and people back into that all the time, and Roland, the last time he called me, he said, it's just laying on the ground. He said, they smashed it, so they always have to come and just beg. I don't know why they don't raise it up or something.
Need to put one of those guards around, like, gas, here.
Andrew, he goes on his camera a lot of times to see who's, who's done it. Is it when the probation office was active?
Probation week. Have you managed, you know, a paper like a bank?
You can also get.
Even if, uh, which, if y'all need anything, go to jury room on the second floor, the bowl. Gowns, uh, masks, gloves. I hadn't seen his shield, but I don't know where he's got them.
So in the jury, the second floor, right?
Uh-huh. Disin, I mean, uh, hand sanitizer.
Grab me a box.
He's got a big box up there of safety goggles, I mean, they're not COVID, they're just for working. Always.
Yeah, that's that stuff that you get for packing and using.
Mr. Hatch is right.
Hey, Wallace, come on in.
You can sit, stand, or.
Yeah, I leave this on while I talk.
Stop snakes.
Yeah.
I do.
It's good, anyway, I mean, we are shielded up, so whatever you feel most comfortable with.
I'd rather take it off, so you can hear me.
All right, uh, let's see, let's go to page, I know he's not here to talk about his budget, but just in case, page nineteen. And Harold said, you want to come talk to us about the air, air conditioning? And Harold said, you want to come talk to us about the air, air condition?
Well, you know, I mentioned that unit went out. And, uh. They were trying to baby that thing along. What I didn't tell you is that, you know, Caprock has been putting Freon in it. And Quality was over there working on Hugles, I think. And they came in not knowing that Caprock had already looked at it. And he said, hey, you got a unit that's going out. While we were up there looking at his. He said, condenser's going out. I said, I know. I've got Caprock looking at it. And he said, well, we didn't know. We just wanted to tell you, your, your unit's fixing to go completely out. But we're, I mean, it was, of course, last week it was a hundred and eight. So inside our office, it was about seventy eight. And. But it's in three, we thought it was two units. You know, I had that one replaced. It was in the back. This morning I went up in attic with him. He said, here's what we didn't realize. There's three units. They're all five ton units. And he goes, we've replaced that. And then we, he showed me where we marked it off. He's, and they're all the same age, he goes. And this is a gross oversimplification. But let's say if we're setting, you got a unit here and a unit here. This unit's the one that's out. And they're going to have to pull this unit out to get to this one. Which means they're going to have to let all the Freon out of it. And it's one of the old units and all that. And he said, when we put it back in there, and he said it could, it could end up giving you problems because it's the same age. Sitting next to the one that you, that you're doing. I told him, I said, I'd rather you figure the price on both of them so you don't have to go back up there. Because he said, if we have to go back up there, he goes, any way you look at it, we're going to have to pull that old one out. That's still working to get to that one. And he said, we could put it back in there and in two weeks, that one go down. He goes, we're just telling you, we'll do it however you want. I asked him to figure it for putting both of them in. He said ballpark, it's eighteen five to nineteen five for both of them. He said, the Freon in that, he goes, then you'll have, if you go back with that old one, then you're going to have the two that have the new Freon system in it and the other. Because we looked at replacing the condenser on the one that's going out. He said, by the time you get that condenser in there and some other piece that has to go with it. He said, you're over halfway to paying for another one.
And I'm assuming they're the year, they're the age of the building?
Yes, he said, all of your units are, he said, all of these units in this building are the same age. And he said, all of yours are, you know, definitely put in there. He said, there's.
Do you have any idea how many units is in that building?
I don't. Uh, he said, you have three five ton units. And I said, are they residential units? And he said, they are. They're three phase. And he said, somebody, and he would not, he said, I've got a pretty good idea of who did it. But he said, somebody put a single, replaced one of those units back over in the other part of the building with a single phase unit instead of the three, which was what was in it. And he said, we don't do that because really, if you're going to go back with a single phase, which is a commercial unit. He goes, you should, uh, do the electrical with it. And he goes, we recommend you just go back with what you had. He said, these have, he goes, I don't know. He said, they look like they're ten, fifteen years old. And I said, well, that's how old, you know, the building? We moved in in oh five.
Okay. Well, uh, now, of course, this is something that we need to do now. So it's not really a budget item, so. Uh, I'll put it on Monday's agenda, uh, for Commissioner's Board. And, uh, now, did you go ahead and tell them, you know, you talked to me that week I was home?
I did. I, I told them I talked to you about the one unit and I said, go ahead and do it. And then this morning, they were there when I got there this morning and they had, they said, you want to come up in the attic and let us show you what the. So, so I went up there and, you know, and then we went with a tape measure back down. He said, this covers from here to there. The reason he was telling me that is, he said, listen, uh, you're, two, you and another one of your lawyers and your office manager are going to be without air for four days. And because he said, we'll get, the condensers are what's hard to get a hold of right now or it takes shipping. And he said, uh, we can start pulling the furnaces and doing all that next Monday. But he said, you need to be prepared for it to be, uh, down.
Well, like I said, uh, just my personal building, if you're going to have to shut one down and move it and disintegrate in order to fix another one, and that one's the same age as the one you replaced, I mean, it'd be just as well to replace both of them.
He was trying to get another year out of that. They were in the building about four weeks ago. And he came, and I told him then, I said, figure what it's going to cost to replace it. And he said, we think we can get another year out of it. Well, it never did cool right. And he said, it's going to be strained if it gets very hot. And I called him one day and I said, man, it's seventy eight degrees. And which doesn't sound bad, but when you're sitting there in a jacket, you know, we're taking our jackets off. I said, well, it's a hundred and eight. But then that quality guy came in, he said, hey, that, we're up there working on another one. He said, you got a unit just about to crater.
Well, go ahead, like I say, get him the price of both of them. I'd say go ahead and tell him, get them processed, go ahead and order.
Okay.
Around two quarter Monday?
Yeah, and we'll take them to the court.
But I, when you said, I don't want to change anything on my budget, but then I thought, as soon as I hung up with you, I thought, man, I just came down from there.
There's something you got to cover.
Well, the bad thing is the way that these buildings are designed, you know, there's no ventilation without, without the system. Obviously, and then there's any air anyway, other than what they have.
It's not like you raising your hand in the wind or nothing.
So, tell him to go ahead and, and try to order both of them. And, uh, he gave me that, uh, quality, then I'll present it to him.
Well, wait, before you run away, on your telephone, I think you've under budgeted that. Because now you're paying for your cell phone. One of the cell phones out of there. And so it's going to be about a thousand sixty forty four. And would you only budgeted seventy?
I thought that we had, I'll, I'll go ask Christina. I thought we figured out a way around that. Because I thought we had, I thought we had cut it down to the only phones that I had on there were mine and Meredith's.
We're just paying, I think we're, you're paying seventy two thirty seven.
Okay.
For that, for Verizon.
Okay. That may be mine and I may be paying Meredith out of my, one of my other phones.
Look, I think it's just yours because of that, it was coming out of that other phone. And Christina found out that.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
We haven't made that.
So it needs to be a thousand sixty five?
I would say it, I would say probably eleven hundred to be safe, to give you safe.
On telephone?
Mm-hmm. Because then you also pay for your, uh. And it runs about sixteen dollars a month. But that is your, uh, monthly service for first communications. That we also pay out about. And it runs about sixteen dollars.
For a pager? For a pager?
Mm-hmm. From, so total, it's.
I'm down to one pager though, right? I thought we'd cut everything. I thought the only person that was carrying a pager was the sexual. Huh?
Do you still buy one for that nurse?
For that nurse, sexual assault nurse examiner, because then they just.
And it, it runs about fifteen. I mean, it's a little bit different every month. It's all around enough, it's about fifteen eighty two sometimes.
Which I would cut that, but that's so much cheaper than trying to buy her phone. And, you know, if she's paged on that, she knows what the deal is.
But since you added your, that cell phone, that's what.
Okay.
I just didn't want you to be sure.
So telephone, uh, Wallace's budget, we need to change that to eleven hundred. All right, well, thanks for coming.
Thank y'all. Okay.
I'm buying one right there. I did.
You already got one?
Yeah. I forgot it last time. I had.
See y'all.
I, I put it on for even Friday, we talked about it on Friday. Did you get ahold of Latrice?
I just saw Roland.
Yeah, Roland.
Oh, is Roland there?
He's been down here.
Well, I can't. There he is, Roland. Don't be shy, Roland. No.
Need to grab a.
Our cleaner guy is following behind. We don't have to put that out, but we put it over the chair.
All right. She put her own down.
Okay. I'll have to put a hook behind him, all right.
Okay, uh, this is, uh, page twenty three. Roland, we're doing a little different this year in revenues, going down the line items. Uh, we're just asking, did you make any changes? I see you made one, but it's on, on machine maintenance and it went down.
Yes, sir, it's, it's at that, uh.
Because it was eighty five and it listed sixty five. You can rinse your machine, why did it go down?
Uh, oh, yes, 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 the, uh, yeah, the. I'm going to need to move. That's dripping.
Oh, is it?
Yes, sir.
Well, it's really not bad.
Is it not that?
Just a fan.
Oh, is this the fan?
All right, just saying, let her turn the fans off.
Oh, yes, yes, I see. Yes, the, that machine maintenance, it's, it's, it's not running us as much monthly as it was before.
Okay.
And so that's why I brought that.
Yeah, sixty five hundred would be about what it's running this year.
Yeah.
Okay. And so, and then, uh, everything else looks like it's the same.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Of course, on the, on the conferences and seminars, just, you know, like everyone else with it this year, the way it is, it's not. You know, they've canceled some on us so far. You know, we've still got some to go to later on the year. Have no idea what they're going to do there.
We'll, we'll leave those for July. We're hoping and anticipating twenty twenty one will be semi-normal year.
Yes, sir.
We'll have to go to those conferences and get that training and stuff.
Yes, sir.
Like I said, that's understandable going on. Anybody else have any questions, Roland?
Cause you wanted to ask him about the turf.
Oh, Roland, oh, there you go. In our revenues, uh. Thank you. Because I've got home, uh, turf and motor vehicle sales tax.
Yes, sir.
Well, how's that, Dr. P. Warren, it is paid warm, it is thirty two oh eight on inter, intergovernmental revenue.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we had it listed at two twenty five. And so far this year, we've had one thirty eight.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's been up to two forty seven and then two oh eight. Uh, do you have any, do you think that two twenty five would be a realistic number for next year?
You know, that is really, that is hard, that.
What is that?
That. What it is, is the, like, the sales tax on motor vehicles, uh, whether new or used. The, the county is, uh, we retain for at the end of the year, after the end of the year. Uh, we get five percent of that.
Now, is that car sold in Hale County or two people that live in Hale County?
That's sold in Hale County.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So.
Well, or if, if someone in Hale County goes to Lubbock and buys a vehicle and they want it, there is a stipulation there. They can sign a form saying that they want it processed in Hale County. Then they, the dealer has to send the paperwork back to us.
Okay.
And it's processed here. But so many people do not know that. And so they go to Lubbock or Amarillo or, you know, wherever and buy a vehicle. Well, the sales tax then is not paid in our county, it's paid in that county on that vehicle. So a lot of people.
We probably need to make that a little more public.
Yeah.
I've done the same thing in the past, didn't, didn't realize it. Well, that's.
Money leaves here until somewhere else.
You know, we're two car dealers down from where we were. And well, more than that, when you count used cars, uh, lots, you know, we just, we don't have very many car lots.
But eventually, hopefully, we'll get more.
Yeah, that's what, you know, I had heard talk of maybe somebody trying to get a Ford dealership in here. But, you know, with Bill Wells, I have no idea what's going to happen there. If someone's going to come back, you know, come in and take that over or, you know, I'm sure General Motors doesn't want that dealership going away, you know. But.
And I would think as successful as Jack Morris was and, and even Ray, Ray Dax.
Yeah.
A Ford dealership would be something that somebody would want to come in and do.
Yeah, but you know, that's what that was for a couple of years ago there when it was so high, you know, with Ray, having the Ford and the Toyota dealerships here, you know, that, it really, really brought a lot of revenue in for us, you know, when they were, they.
Well, we, we've done a hundred and thirty eight so far this year.
Yes, sir.
So do you think we would be safe in, in putting that at about, uh, two hundred thousand?
You know, David, with. Because with things already this year, uh, the car sales and, you know. That sales tax would be, uh, what we would show for next year, you know, what we would pay on. And I really, uh, the sales are down. Because, uh, even the used car, uh. I think last week. We had two dealers may have brought in for eight, maybe ten cars for the used car lots, you know. It slowed down a lot.
Okay.
A lot. You know, I'd really, really hate to predict it would be that, that, and like with Bill Wells and Plainview Dodge, uh. The last four days, we've done one for Plainview Dodge. Now, Bill Wells had a good weekend, but normally it's about one, two, three per day for them. So, you know, it, it's cut down considerably and I would really, really hate to predict that much. You know, after this, if this gets over this COVID, I would, I would think that the car sales would come up towards the end of the year. And it may get up to that one seventy five to maybe two hundred. But I would, David, I would really, really think it would go, would not go past that two hundred.
Okay. Well, let's, uh, let's go ahead and change it too. Because I do know, uh, lots of the car dealers or car companies have lots of incentives, uh.
Yes, sir.
For new car sales and stuff, so I think, you know, maybe, maybe that will help us some. And we're up to one thirty eight so far. Now, is that a, a September figure or is that an actual calendar year figure?
That's an actual calendar year, yes, sir. And they go, and it, uh.
So if we're at one thirty eight at this point in this year, then hopefully two hundred is not out for next year.
What this is, this was for, uh, uh. Twenty twenties annual. See, so, uh, I meant, uh, so far into twenty twenty, yeah, so it's. I really don't know for sure how they, what, where they figured that from. But it's, you know, I never have called at the comptroller and ask them, you know, what, what dates do you figure this? You know, what, for sure, what dates, you know. And I can do that if you would like and get that information back to you, but it's just, uh.
Well, you know, it's just like, you know, we, we're trying not to budge.
I understand, yes, sir.
This year because, you know, heaven help us that we don't have another year like this year.
Amen, that's right.
And so, uh, like I say, we appreciate your input and, and like I said, we'll probably put that somewhere between one seventy five and two.
Yes, sir.
If you go from there.
I, I would, I would really, really, uh, like to predict that would be fifty to seventy five thousand dollar higher.
Okay.
But I, I just, I, I just would think like there are. But I, I just, I, I just would think like there are, I just really don't think that it's gonna be that way.
Okay. Any other questions, Roland?
What about the item thirty-two oh seven, Judge? Sales tax, one just above that.
Yeah. Well, we'll leave it, uh, based upon where we've been on our past history. Cause we've been a million seven in eighteen and nineteen, and so, like I say, we don't want to focus on twenty-twenty.
Well, that's not, that's not one of the moments.
That's not?
No, sir.
Oh, okay.
That's actually sales tax. So, I mean, everybody went crazy buying stuff, so as far as sales tax, I think it could be okay.
And it's down that way.
Okay, all right. All right, well, thank you, Roland. If you don't have any questions with us, I guess we're done.
No, sir, I don't, I just wanna say thank you, and I really appreciate what you're doing and the, and the finances we have for our offices to, to take care of our offices, I really do appreciate this.
You've got your office in pretty good shape.
Yes, sir, and I, I've got some, I've got some, uh, some funds for this year that we've kinda put back a little bit so that I can do some more with some more furnishings, you know, instead of asking for, for that, so... But yes, it is.
We appreciate the job you did.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Roland.
Thanks.
Would you take your...
Oh, Roland, would you take that throwaway for us, please?
Blue thing is trying to get the trash.
Okay. I don't know, we, we do the same thing over there for each other, I'm like... I know, I understand.
All right, thank you, Roland.
Thank you.
He does.
Good job.
So, when are you getting that?
Tonight.
All right, who's in?
Uh, is Latrice ready?
Um, I haven't heard from her.
Okay.
If you want to take it right.
Yeah, oh, yeah. This is our right time, so when we come back, uh, it'll be Latrice, and then we've got Karen. And then, and then Lakook, Roger, and the others. We still on?
Yeah.
We still on, and you know, yeah.
But it's better than the last.
I like the last better.
Days.
My glass aren't bad. My glass aren't bad.
Oh, see, my glasses fall out.
I can't go like this, I can't, every time I do the...
Only thing that bothers me is that one.
So, that's what we made.
Yeah.
My glasses fall out too much.
Okay, Latrice is here.
Page six.
There we go.
Hey, she's got blocks on her.
It'll go away.
Morning, Chris.
Morning, Chris.
Fix where you can see everybody.
Can you see us?
I can see y'all.
All right, all right, then, we're back, uh, out of break, uh, we're at the county clerk's general, uh, fund budget on page six. Uh, Latrice, did you change anything on this?
Uh, the only change I have is down there at office equipment, and I've just, I put it at twenty-five hundred.
Okay. All right, so it was fifty, uh, one oh eight, and you moved it to twenty-five hundred?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions of Latrice on the budget? All right, then let's go to page twenty. Okay, this is the elections budget. Did you change anything? And I noticed on your, uh, post that you went down quite a bit because it's not a election year.
On most of this one, I went down on most of them, uh, of course, not office equipment, but because it will be, uh, you know, an off-election year, like just a smaller year, so I went down on the wages, down on the overtime. Uh, all of that top row, I went down, on postage, I went down, election supplies down, and machine maintenance.
Okay.
And then, who knows about conference and seminars, but I just, I put it at three thousand because in two thousand nineteen, it was thirty-one fifty-eight.
Okay. And then you left your office equipment the same?
Yes, because that's what I've used to pay for the, uh, support and, uh, support fees and maintenance and stuff for the, uh, voting equipment.
Okay. Any questions on the election? All right, then let's go to page seventy-three.
Seventy-three.
Yes, sir. Kinda time the first.
The virus statistics.
Okay, the, uh, battles statistics, uh, went up a couple hundred bucks in here.
Yeah, I just went up on the revenue on that because in two thousand nineteen, it was twenty-eight fifty-eight, so I just went up, I just put twenty-eight hundred.
Okay, all right. Then the next page will be the expenditures, and you went down in record preservation.
On that one, uh, I left, uh, seminar two thousand, I said, we'll see about that, and then on the record preservation, I went down to five thousand on the half one.
Okay. All right, then the next page is revenues for your clerk's man, uh, record management. Uh, you left it all the same?
I did.
All right, then the next page will be the expenditures. Okay. Uh, you went down on, on here from eighty thousand to sixty-five?
Yes. And that's a project that, I mean, I still have two years left, but that, it's about sixty thousand a year, so I went down to sixty-five on it this year.
Okay.
For next year.
All right. All right, then the next page is your revenues on your archives, uh, and you left it all the same?
I did.
Then the next page is the expenditures, and it looks like you left that the same.
Yeah, at the sixty-five.
And then on revenues and records management, uh, it looks like you left that the same?
Yes.
And then on the expenditures, uh, you left it the same. Well, now, on the equipment?
Yes.
Yeah, you left it the same, okay.
The ma, machine maintenance, yeah, I pay for my copier out of that.
Okay, and then we go to page eighty-three and eighty-four. Okay, on your eighty, eighty-three is the revenues on the, uh, county court technology, and you left that the same?
Yes. I did.
And on page eighty-four is the expenditures, and you left it the same?
Yes, sir.
All right. Does anyone have any questions, to Latrice? All right, Latrice, do you have any questions with us?
I don't think so.
Well, I hope you get feeling better.
I do too.
All right.
I think I'm almost there.
All right, all right, we'll see you later.
Oh, yeah?
Come see us. Bye-bye.
Okay. Bye, thank y'all.
Did, did anybody talk to this dealership?
No.
Should we try to call her?
Well, I was telling Maria lots of times she comes and goes out to the jail.
Yeah, I don't know if she's...
Let's try to call her.
She's not going to the jail because they're doing it.
That's right, okay. This diet starts on sixteen.
I feel like...
Good today?
I could do a face lift, y'all.
Are you good today?
Yeah, I'm good.
Well, I'm doing good with your budget here, and we, we had you scheduled at eleven fifteen, I believe. Uh, we're running a little ahead of schedule, I didn't know where you was at or what you're doing, but if you, where you can, you're welcome to come on up now. Okay, yes, ma'am, that'd be great. Thank you. She's at the bank, and she'll be headed this way.
All right. She asked for a couple names.
Sixteen?
Yeah, behind me. She asked for, uh, a Martine sign and a Herman potter, he raised from the step thirteen to fourteen, and Latrice is in my left, very quick. We still live or memorized or something?
We're live.
You really hate a lady, but I've been making things of those nurses and overtime, I hate wearing these, things that kind of aggravation or something, and wearing this, you know, mask.
I was calling them on the news last night, I saw one of those TSA workers and that, and they had one of these on, and a mask.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, then it's hot, too, you know?
Not just for one day. Day, 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 day.
You know, it's hundred and something degree days.
Twelve hours a day, fourteen hours a day.
Yeah.
Well, even at the hospital, when you come in, rest or there, or whatever, they got the same one.
Well, even the grocery store, where you, you know, check you out.
I think there's about twenty minutes, just to, you know, just die, but, you know, it's, you know.
I don't understand, you know, the store, it's not bad, it's comfortable, and one, so when you get, check it out.
Yeah, they're gonna be shaking down.
The, uh, state control, sales tax, they did not have a lot of rescue on that one?
She sort of checked out, we've done, and, and, I have a couple of questions, was that a two one?
On page one, yes. Okay.
Okay, if you'll, Melinda will have it on the screen, but Margie just sent me a screenshot, I asked her while we're on break, but we've collected that six hundred and, and, yeah.
It says, tell me line out of thirty-two oh seven on page one.
The one I brought up? State control returns.
I suppose four months.
The six hundred thousand for four months.
Yes, sir.
Four months.
And that's why I had Melinda bring it up. Could you read up the totals, my picture, I can't zoom in on it for some reason.
Seven, no, six, seven, three, six, twenty.
I was talking about the monthly judge, so you can get an idea.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't know that.
What do you mean? I mean, it's inflection.
You can provide that for four.
It's based on sales tax.
Well, there's five months, one, two, three, four, five months.
What's the total on it, on that page?
Six seventy-three, six nine two three two.
Six seventy-three, six twenty, for short. Six seventy-three, six twenty, for five months.
Did you do a, the beginning of the year, Melinda, did you think it had some drawbacks or something?
No, I mean, they're, they're taking out, I mean, I'm calculating from March.
What I'm getting at, Judge, is that we're, you got seven...
And I don't know how much it's gonna cost because I figured with the fancy lights and everything, everybody's been telling me that's become a problem later on.
Okay.
Technology, all that kind of stuff, but I'm thinking that I've called Sign Pro, and, uh, they are working on it. So, I think it would be cheaper, but am I gonna be able to take that out of my technology? Or I have to take it out of building and grounds?
I thought we had talked about before you taking it out of the technology.
We did.
But do you have any idea?
But it was a different type of sign.
Well, what you were saying...
It was a different sign.
It's electrical sign, it is technology.
If anything's electronic, too, could it be?
It's a what?
Something electronic, like if I decided to put lights or whatever out there, cause I would have to run the lights and have everything on it.
That's just electrical.
Okay. I really think it would probably be cheaper anyway, but I won't do it without it until I come and get everything, and I just wanted to make sure because I've started on it, but it might be the end of the year or into the next year before I get to it.
Okay.
Okay?
And then, uh, out to, she requested we could do, uh, raise the hernia and Patricia up a step, and also for a five percent raise, so, uh, we're not to that point in the process yet, so, but we will consider that.
Okay. I have something else I wanna discuss with you, too. Uh, the CDE troopers, of course, they're working at my office, and they've started back, and they have come to me about wanting grills for their vehicles. Because Hale County did give two of the county, I mean, two of them from here, grills. And that's been a while back, but they've been asking me about it. They do work my office, and there are four of them, four CDs that are actually stationed in Lubbock, but then I have two highway patrol. But then I have two highway patrol, and those two highway patrol are working, they have kept us alive. They've kept my revenue better than I thought it would be. And the guys have been working, they worked all last week, they just didn't work Friday, and they're again, they're there again today. CVE, yes. And, you know, they came to me and asked me, they said there was a judge that had an account, like, for two thousand dollars, and if they needed something, VBS, that she was willing to get it, to get him to work in her county. So they, they were talking to me about it, but I said, I thought, I will present it to you all and see what you think, and if you think, no, then...
There's four of them?
There's four CVEs. It's Heath, Buck, Castro, and Martin is a new guy, which he was from Lubbock anyway, but he switched to CVE. They're the only four in Lubbock. The others come from, like, uh, I don't even know where they live, Mule Shoe and wherever, they come over to work, but they're not like those four guys right there. They always work my scales, always. But they come, others come for the operation, other places, but I'm talking about our area.
Didn't we do something, or did the same thing for Deluna and Mendosa?
Yes.
Couple of years ago?
Couple of years ago. Or it's, maybe it's even been longer than that.
Maybe.
But I do have highway patrol. These two guys are...
So basically, you're asking for two? No, just for, we already did two. Well, now, just asking for the highway.
Well, see, I didn't wanna put the highway patrol, you know, because there, I have one stationed in my office, and we only have two left in Plainview. And you know why. But I don't know if, you know, Hagens is talking about from my office moving to Lubbock, and the McCardos talking about going to Amarola, cause he's probably gonna get married. So that's gonna leave us one trooper in Hill County. So I don't wanna leave them out. If we decide to do something, I'll just tell the guy, those guys, this is the one so much they get this time, and then the next time, the next year, they can get it the next year, if y'all decide to do that.
Well, in the end, we... I'm sorry, Ma, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I don't think we need to put that in your, in your, in your budget. I, I think that...
Okay.
I think, I think you do like you're doing right now. Come in before the committee of court, ask for them, and then let us decide what we're gonna do, because you said there was a judge that had an account.
She said something about account, and I said, we don't do line items for account.
So many move, I mean, what do we, did do, and then...
If we get them back?
Well, I don't think we...
That's what I'm saying. I mean, if they get, just take a few months, and they're gone, they pick that with them.
But like you say, that's something we can talk about.
Right, you know, and like, uh, Heath and Buck and Danny, I think they'll always be in Lubbock. He lives in Idloo, Danny's set in in Lubbock also. Buck lives in Cosveton.
Maybe Lubbock County can get one.
They probably won't. I'm sure they, yeah.
I don't think they touch their vehicles a little bit, like when they re-sign.
No, they, their vehicles stay and go to the next person until they retire, more or less, or till they've got too many miles, and they turn them in.
So if we bought them and put them, I only, we know that it's gonna be on the, it's...
Right.
We ain't got four, about nine, one, one, and then...
That's what, well, that I'll make sure. I haven't talked, I didn't wanna talk to them about it because they have just been bringing it up here lately a lot to me, and I thought, well...
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's fair enough.
How much do you think they, Laura?
I would say at least eight hundred, maybe.
How much?
Around eight hundred?
Eight to nine. Yeah, I'd say at least that. Yes.
Can you look them up?
A piece, any, eight hundred a piece.
Okay. Uh, and then Karen's got a couple other pages we need to look at.
Oh, yeah, I do.
I really thought that the O's office did that.
Do what?
I thought Laura's office did something.
Uh...
Yeah, here's where we did it. We did it in twenty seventeen.
Range and grill, from, like, on the picture, it'd be on the total, so it'd be close.
We did it in twenty seventeen, we bought two.
Shows out here, this is just one time. Eleven, one thousand, one hundred ninety-five bucks.
But I have a feeling that the guys probably got some of their equipment from VPS where they get kind of a discount.
Melinda said in seventeen, we bought two of them for eight hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Okay.
And we bought them from Apex.
At Apex, okay.
And those were purchased from Apex.
Okay.
Well, that may be a little different, but we'll have to do, we'll do it.
Okay.
Okay, uh, all right, page, uh, let's see, ninety-six and ninety-seven.
I kept all of that the same also. Carla, do we have anything else coming? Computer-wise? It's most of that already gone through my technology, that we bought, computers and all that, okay?
Okay, on page ninety-six is the, uh, technology fund, uh, the revenue.
Mm-hmm.
And you left those the same?
Yes, sir.
And on page nine-seven is the revenue, uh, the expenditures, and you left those the same?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions to the page?
Only one more thing. We still haven't hired help, you know, we still have that. I mean, you, another girl. We're still looking into that, but right now, we just thought, no, not at all.
All right.
Okay.
We appreciate it today.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Uh-huh, and throw it away? Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Well, make sure you sign the...
Thing, okay.
All right, thank you, Judge.
Uh-huh, thank you. You bet. I'll take care. Good to see you.
See you. Karen sprays everybody down before they leave. Well, that concludes our, uh, agenda for this morning, uh, when we start at one thirty, the David conference. This afternoon, we got David conference. Ben Garcia, Stacy Hurst, Harley Cannon, Deborah Lambright, and then Sergeant Paul. Everybody has a thing to say, please, we recessed. You want?
No.
Okay. Then we'll stand and recess for one thirty.